One, two, three, four, five.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five, and this is the Paso Robles City Council meeting. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting and have roll call. Melissa, would you do that for us?
Councilmember Bausch.
Here.
Councilmember Peel.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Let the record show Councilmember Strong is absent today. Mayor Hammond?
Here. Tonight we have closed session items. There's one, and we'll let our city attorney, uh, Lesbithole, tell us what we're gonna be talking about.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We are going into closed session on one item. Uh, public employee labor negotiations pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The sitting negotiators are, uh, Mr. Hewat, the city manager, Ryan Cornell, uh, the administrative services director, and Shay Johnson, special counsel from Leeward Cassidy Whitmore. And the employee organizations are the International Association of Firefighters, Paso Robles Police Officers Association, Service Employees International Union, Unrepresented Part-Time Employees, and Unrepresented Management. And that's our only item.
Okay, thank you, Lesbith. Uh, we'll open up public comment regarding session matters. Anyone in the audience? We see none. Is there anyone online? Listen?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn to end to closed session and we will be reconvening at six P M.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We are going into closed session on one item. Uh, public employee labor negotiations pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The sitting negotiators are, uh, Mr. Hewat, the city manager, Ryan Cornell, uh, the administrative services director, and Shay Johnson, special counsel from Leeward Cassidy Whitmore. And the employee organizations are the International Association of Firefighters, Paso Robles Police Officers Association, Service Employees International Union, Unrepresented Part-Time Employees, and Unrepresented Management. And that's our only item.
Okay, thank you, Lesbith. Uh, we'll open up public comment regarding session matters. Anyone in the audience? We see none. Is there anyone online? Listen?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn to end to closed session and we will be reconvening at six P M.
Good evening everyone. It's Tuesday, October 7, 2025. The past World City Council will reconvene from closed session. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Steve Briggery.
He's following me? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands one nation, founded on liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation will be by Pastor Gabe.
May we remain standing. Father God, what an honor it is to stand in this place, Lord God, and the great people that you've trusted to manage this city. I pray, God, that you would impart them wisdom and understanding, and they would hear the voice of the people. God, I pray, God, that they realize, Lord God, that all the government is upon your shoulders, and we just get a chance to serve. God, I pray, God, over every man, every woman on the council, Lord God, if they don't know you, that they would come to know you. And if they have known you and things have just gotten rough, I just pray that the love of God would draw them back. But we have a city to live in. But we have a city to live in, and we got a city to bless. And I just pray, God, that this place, Lord God, will be a great time, that we stand upon the promises of God and declare that the Spirit of God is over this place. Thank you, Lord God, for our city, and thank you for America. God will give you thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, we call roll call, please.
Councilmember Vosch.
Here.
Councilmember Rebeal.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Let the record show that Councilmember Strong is absent this evening. Mayor Hammond.
Here. We'll go ahead and introduce staff introductions, starting at my right. Any other commission members or city assemblies that you have served for the city can also be recognized. Melissa.
Melissa Martin, City Clerk, joined by Mary Spawnholtz, Deputy City Clerk, and Karen Jackson, IT Technician.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director.
Christopher Lecco, Utilities Director.
Ditas Esperanza, Capital Project Manager.
Detective Nurse, Development Division.
Randy Harris, Deputy Commissioner.
All that information, our KIT, Deputy Commissioner.
David Licaro, Public Works Operations.
White London, Detective Services.
Yes, Detective Associate.
Sharon. Got a Commissioner there, Esther.
Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a report out from closed session, and we'll have Legal Counsel Elizabeth Hall tell us what we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, the council went into closed session on one item. It was public employee labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Excuse me. City negotiators were Mr. Hewat, City Manager, Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director, and Shay Johnson, Special Counsel from Lebert Cassidy Whitmore. The employee organizations were International Association of Firefighters, Passerables Police Officers Association, SEIU, Unrepresented Part-Time Employees, and Represented Management Employees, and there was no reportable action.
Very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, I have two presentations, and if I could have Board Member Malani Anderson join with me up front.
Whereas domestic violence awareness month calls attention to the fact that intimate partner violence is widespread and impacts every person in Passerables, and whereas Lumina Alliance provides essential life-saving services for survivors, their children, and families throughout San Antonio County, including Passerables, and whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and can last a lifetime, and whereas the mitigation of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities increases their vulnerability to intimate partner violence. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with a 24-hour crisis hotline, advocacy, therapy, transitional and emergency housing, provincial education, and with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals, and whereas Lumina Alliance has seen a surge in crisis line calls by 33% this year, rising from 2,100 to over 2,800 calls. Housing placements also increased significantly, growing from 170 to 110 individuals saved and served, a 24% increase. Notably, nearly half of those housed were children. And whereas Lumina Alliance serves as a bright light during dark times for survivors of intimate partner violence, illuminating a path towards safety and healing. And whereas the city of Passerables supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance, how every second bit of society can also work together to address domestic violence, and how to help survivors connect with their services. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John Hammond, by virtue of authority vested me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. You covered it all. They gave me some things to say, but every single one of them was what you said, so thank you, we really appreciate it. My name is Malani Anderson, I've been involved with Lumina Alliance for about 14 years in one way or another. I'm on the Board of Directors, and it's a really important organization. It's the only organization in our county that supports survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, so we have our hands full, and with funding being uncertain these days, we really have our hands full. So we're doing a lot of fundraising and just making people aware that we exist, and Lumina Alliance is a great resource for anyone that needs any help, has any questions, so if you or someone you know is in crisis, just give us a call. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. We also have another proclamation, and if I could have Angelica Forteen, Community Service Director, and Maria Garcia, our former City Councilwoman and Vice President of Hispanic Business. Will you come on? Yeah? Angelica? Yeah, Maria, watch over there.
Declaring September 15 through October 15, Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated in the United States annually since 1988, when President Reagan expanded the week-long celebration, first established by President Johnson in 1968, into a 30-day period starting September 15 and ending October 15. And whereas September 15 is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, followed by Mexico on September 16, and Chile on September 18. And whereas Hispanic residents represent 38% of the population, significantly contribute to our social fabric that makes the city of Passerables a vibrant and prosperous community for all, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to recognize the invaluable and countless ways Hispanic residents contribute to our common goals and to making El Paso de Rabels a better place to live, work, and play. Whereas the downtown Passerables Main Street Association and the Hispanic Business Association will host their second annual Dia de los Muertos Celebration in the Park, October 25, providing the community with an opportunity to celebrate Hispanic culture and traditions. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John Hammond, by virtue of authority vested me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim 30-day periods starting September 15 and ending October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month, and recommend that all citizens of the city of Passerables join and recognize in the importance of this month. Thank you. Want to say something, Mayor?
First of all, I wanted to say invite Francisco Ramirez, he's our current president of the Hispanic Business Association, and we have Liz as our Vice President. I just want to say thank you to the city of Passerables for allowing us to have our cultural events. We also did Cinco de Mayo, so I want to thank Frida, thank you so much for helping me get all the paperwork put in for that. I want to also thank Downtown Association for partnering up with us and making this a second annual event. But you know, it's not just about HBA. I'm here, and we're here as volunteers to the organization, receiving this award, but this is truly for all those organizations out there that help the Hispanic community. There's so many, like Lumina Helps, the Slope Food Bank Helps, First Five, we have Mujeres de Acción that is out there in the community, we have a Spanish magazine called Somos that is out there. So I know HBA is on the proclamation, but I just want to give a shout out to actually all the organizations that are out there that give back to the community. Thank you very much.
Next, we have up on presentations, Ditas Esperanza with Capital Project Report. Ditas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is going to be a tag-team report with several people on staff with the city. So I will start out with the public works projects that are in progress, in construction. So these are five, one, two, three, four, five, six. Creston Road, of course, is just about done. We're still waiting for the signal to get turned on the week of October 21, and then after that, it should be finished. There is still some remaining paving and striping that we need to do from Trigo Orchard, and then that will be finished. The pickleball court at Sherwood Park is coming along well. The picture on the left is a pad that is waiting for the prefab restroom. If you recall, that was the critical path to get the restroom fabricated, and so the completion of the pickleball court is contingent upon the arrival of the prefab restroom. I'm pleased to announce that there's not too much delay on the delivery, and so we should be receiving it fairly soon, and the first quarter opening of the pickleball court should be happening. The picture on the right is the parking lot. All the curbs have been installed and the light posts. This week, the contractor will be placing pervious concrete on that parking lot that is in lieu of asphalt. That is part of the design for the pervious concrete is so that it would receive stormwater runoff instead of leaving the site. It's part of the low-impact development that we're required to do when we increase the impervious surfaces. The regional water board wants us to contain all the stormwater on-site instead of leaving it. So our solution was to put pervious concrete on the parking lot instead of asphalt. So that should be happening this week. And so the Flamston project is just about done as well. There are six push-button pedestrian flash signals that is assisting with making crossing safe for the students. We're just about done. We need to install some signs, and striping is in progress. This one is a picture of striping on Spring Street, and then we need to do re-striping on Oak Street, and then a little bit on 26th Street, and then that project will be completed. So now we need something to do, so we have some upcoming projects. Oh, sorry, I forgot about 12th Street. The 12th Street Railroad Parking Lot is in progress. We've removed the old asphalt. The light posts bases have been installed. The retaining wall is complete. This week, we're starting to do the curb installation, and then after that would be the asphalt, and then we'll start installing the streetlights and the landscaping. It has been quite a bit of a challenge working with PG&E, so it's kind of put us a delay a little bit on the project, but we were able to push them to finish last week, and then this week, the contractor has mobilized to start the curbs and the pavement. So now we have some upcoming projects. This is the list. We have the Crestline and Fairview Neighborhood Repairs, you awarded that at your last meeting. So we're going through the contract documents award phase, and then we will begin that. I think we're just about done with the contract phase. I expect to have a preconstruction meeting in the next couple of weeks. The same with the West Side Fiber Eye Slurry, city council awarded that project. We went through the contract document phase, we're about done with that as well, and so I expect to have a preconstruction meeting for that project in a couple of weeks as well. Same with the Riverside Capitol Hill Pipeline Project, that was awarded as well. We went through the contract phase, we had our preconstruction meeting, we're just waiting for all the submittals to be approved, because we have to have pipe delivery, valves, things of that nature, and then you'll see that coming along. The Creston Road Phase Two is just about done as well. Later on in your agenda, we are asking you to approve the services for a contract to provide construction management services that will allow us to continue with the design and arrive at a 100% bid-ready project, hoping to start it first quarter 2026. Just want to remind everybody of the numerous pipelines as illustrated in this exhibit, storm drains, water, sewer that will need to be constructed, and so because of that, just want to remind everybody that Rolling Hills will be closed during the construction of this roundabout. However, Creston Road will be open all the time, but it'll have different traffic control route as we finish each stage, so it will be challenging, and so we hope the community will work with us and be patient as we try to finish this project. That concludes the Public Works Capital Projects phase of this presentation. If you have any questions, if you don't have any questions, I'll sit down and turn it over to David Licaro.
Okay. Questions abused?
Actually, I have one. Can you tell me more about the pervious concrete? I don't know if I'm familiar with that.
Okay, so it's concrete that has little holes in them. And so that way, when it rains, instead of leaving the site and being lost, it gets into the ground and it goes into, and it actually helps with the groundwater.
So it's actually concrete, but with voids in it that lets the water come in?
You can see the parking lot at the train station, the parking lot that's next to the Pioneer Baseball Field, that's pervious concrete.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. David?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, David Licaro, Public Works Operations Manager. I am pleased to say that after you folks had made action at the last city council approving the five-year road repair plan, we're actually starting on our first small or minor road repair project. In fact, we just finished that up. So as part of your action last meeting that allocated $500,000 per year for small projects, that includes anything small from dips to breaks to anything that might happen within the roadway that our in-house staff can take care of. So on September 29, we started to do some road repairs. This took place on Clubhouse Drive, where there was a significant dip in the roadway causing it for rough rides for some of the drivers. We chose this location because it's relatively small, we have some new members on our staff, and this is a great opportunity, avoiding some traffic, heavy traffic, that this is a great place to start and do some team building, really kind of get some hands-on experience with some of our staff and really some of the equipment as well.
David, we're able to do that with our forces up to a certain level?
That's correct, yeah. So $75,000 per project is the threshold. That's really in accordance with our public contracting code, so as long as we're not breaking that threshold, we're not out of compliance with that.
Got it.
These are smaller projects, just keep in mind, so this one, just for size-wise, it was 450 square feet, but it was quite a dip. I mean, anybody who drove down that would experience this, and obviously either slow down or scratched the bottom of their car, so those minor inconveniences, but it's certainly something that we want to make sure that we're repairing. So you can see our guys out there really just putting some base on some of the carve-outs. We split the road so that we were able to make sure that folks were able to get in and out of their homes in that area, and so we got some good training on the backhoe, some of the other equipment that we have as well. This is the finished product, but again, the total cost of this project was calculated below was calculated before, below that $75,000 threshold. So that lets us, our city's own staff to actually be able to do that. So the way we calculated it is essentially being able to do about six small or minor repair road projects per year, and that's how we've calculated it. This one actually fell pretty low, so we might be able to fit seven. Who knows? We're going to give it a shot. So just to continue the story on this, we have identified 10 total locations, all minor repair. And Clubhouse now being completed, we're moving on to the next one. We're going to try to beat the rains as well. So that also plays a part in when we can do these projects. My goodness gracious, I blanked on the name. Black, geez Louise. That is actually on the list top number three. So we're going to be able to do that hopefully before the rains start. But we'll see. If, if we start to see something in November, then we might have to push it out. But that's the goal. We're going to try to get there. Also on other news, we have our stormwater projects. One thing that I'd like to say is that we've been continuing to complete significant drainage repair projects. So far, our Public Works Stormwater Division has completed four out of five projects. Satellite drainage is one of these. This is located on the northeast portion of the airport property. This has been in significant damage for at least a decade, as long as I've been here, if not a little longer. The real problem with this here is that it threatens an adjacent private property, which used to be Lubrizol, but now it's Coast Southwest Surfactants. They do surfactants. As you can see in the left picture, you have some holding tanks that's processed wastewater. And so any significant undermining of that structure there could cause an environmental risk. Obviously, anything going into that drainage is going to be a problem. So we've been working over, gosh, maybe the last couple of years with Regional Water Board, Army Corps, Fish and Wildlife, you name it. And we got all the necessary permits in place. At your last meeting, you allowed us to authorize a contract with Spurco. These guys have been cooking, and they started October 1st. And as you can see, they've already started to re-contour the drainage. They're going to be putting in more soil over by the fence line so that we have a little bit more security there for other surfactant company. And here it is today. In fact, this was earlier this morning. So these guys are already contoured and compacted. We're pulling some compaction tests. Next step is base. We have a blanket going over that. And then significant about 16 to 18 inch rock that's going to line that drainage. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a good deal. So we gave them 60 days, but these guys are moving so quick. I'm hoping by the end of the month, we're trying to beat the rains. So I'm excited that this project is actually happening. So this is, this is a good job. Anyway, at this point, if you don't have any questions for me on these last two projects, I'll go ahead and pass it on to, I believe, Dante. Yes?
Any question for David?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Proton Gregory.
Yes, Mr. Licaro. Just a quick, simple question for you.
Yeah.
So when you do our road repairs in-house, you're taking a regular road crew, takes curb our roads off what they're doing and do the repairs, then they go back to what they're doing, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, good.
Yeah, we try to schedule it so that we can get the, is that project right there? It was a two-day project? So we're also kind of looking at the area and the size of the, of the project versus all the other needs that we have to get done as well. There's quite a list of things to do.
Very good, thank you.
David, do we, we don't really have a dedicated street repair crew, do we? Or do we have staff that just double up, put another hat on, that do the same thing? Or?
No, our, our dedicated street staff, yeah, they've, they do everything from sidewalks, signs, road repairs, potholes. That's our dedicated street crew. And so this is just fortunate for us with the passing of I-24 that we're able to actually start to do some real road projects. And this is exciting to see these guys hands-on doing some paving work.
Well, I like to recommend that when you run out of that 500,000, come ask for some more because we can find it someplace. I mean, that's important. I mean, this, the streets are where most of the Brooklyn's feel and work and use the most. I mean, so we want to take care of that as quick as we can when we have the ability to do it.
I appreciate that, sir, absolutely. We're looking into it. The list gets longer.
I know, I know. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question about the drainage.
Yes.
That's quite a project. Congratulations. Looks like it's really important. Does the Regional Board do ongoing inspections during construction or?
They have the right to. They don't, they'll schedule it on random because we don't have any rain forecasted. There's little erosion control. Most of what we're doing is dust suppression, so there is a water tanker on, onsite to deal with that. So there's very little runoff or any erosion control at this point. But we have an approved erosion control plan to move forward just in case we get into that, that time of season.
Quick question, David. That cut on that first picture on the left there, is that going to be filled in with boulders, I mean, heavier stone?
Yeah, my understanding is actually we're going to be putting in a Class Two base, so we're going to kind of edge that up a little bit.
Hold it up, yeah.
Right? And then we have basically this, it's called Merify. It's like kind of a, it's a plastic.
Barrier, yeah.
Barrier that, but it's also porous, so water can't soak through. And then on top of that, some rock. So this is going to be a tank.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, City Council. Dante Pecanino, Senior Development Review Engineer. We wanted to give you guys a quick update on Scott Street. We got a sewer upgrade project that is coming through, kind of started at the edge of the golf course, and it's moving its way east towards the Venado project that's happening on the east side of town, Big Tract. So in the next coming weeks, we're going to have a closure of Scott Street for safety reasons. We don't want any traffic backing up onto Creston Road. The pipeline itself is in, in the middle of a travel lane, so we'd have to do one-way flagging, and it could stack up vehicles. So the detour that we're going to provide folks is San Yanez to Villa Ramona, and that's Phase One of that. We were scheduled to start a week from now on October 14th, but the contractor just informed us this morning, they're working through the parking lot in Sherwood. They just crossed Creston, and they hit an unknown utility, so we're tracking that down, hopefully being able to move forward soon. But that date is going to push a little bit, and we'll update everyone accordingly. Phase Two will be the segment from the Veterans Senior Center, east towards, that's labeled wrong, but that should be Commerce Way instead of Creston Road on the right. So this will be one-way flagging, so there will be some delays as they work through here. We've been working heavily with the contractor to allow access to the Veterans and Senior Center. One driveway will be open at all times, so either the left or the right. They'll coordinate that directly with the Veterans Center. And that should be, that'll be on the heels of Phase One. So those dates are estimated, but we'll keep everyone updated as, as things come up. So we had, unless you had any questions?
All right, thank you, Dante. Any questions?
Frida, I'll pass it off to Frida now.
Appreciate it, thank you. Frida?
Can you believe it? We're talking about the holidays.
Yeah, I saw them out there.
Yeah, they're out there. So if you've been to the park this week, you know we're starting to install our holiday lights. This is only Phase One of the installation, some of the bigger trees. If you're around, just a little hint for Augie and family, if you're around on tomorrow or Thursday night, we're going to be doing some testing of what we've installed. But you'll expect to see some new trees lit, additional photo opportunities, and it should be just as spectacular as it, it generally is. I'd like to introduce a new sponsorship program for the lights and our New Year's Eve Concert and Bonfire, which is also happening again this year. We launched at residents' request a sponsor program last year. We're expanding that this year. Again, any amount is welcome. There's no minimum, and everybody gets a, some sort of recognition depending on how much they contribute. But it is a great time. The lights are fantastic, and the event, if you haven't been, which I know all of you have, is, is a really fun way to end the year. So just want to make everyone aware to go to prcity.com/pasolights and learn about our new sponsorship program for the lights and New Year's.
Very good, Frida. All right, any questions?
Thank you, Frida.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was it for Capital Projects. We have next vegetation management update.
Could I make a comment?
Sure, Dale, go ahead.
Dale, I'm glad that they're doing detours for the Senior Center. That Senior Center has a lot of activity added, the veterans some, but make sure it's clearly marked because there's already people at the Senior Center saying, how are we going to get to our Senior Center? So I hope that's good. My other question was, I, maybe I missed it, but when they're doing the cement instead of the asphalt for the pickleball, was there a change order required? And if so, how much did it cost?
Frida, that was, I think, planned and designed to be pervious concrete, wasn't it?
The pervious concrete is in the parking lot. It's not in the, for the courts. The courts are still asphalt.
Right, yeah. But the pervious is for drainage, stormwater management.
Right, and it was always planned that way.
Got it. Thank you. All right, moving on then to Italian Chief J. Enz. You have our vegetation management update. Welcome, Chair.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Hammond, members of Council. Italian Chief J. Enz. Here to provide you a progress update, highlight key successes, and outline future direction for the project. So why did the project get initiated? Well, the Salinas River Corridor had become heavily overgrown with decadent dense vegetation, making it prone to intense fire behavior. Numerous fires had ignited in the riverbed, threatening neighborhoods, businesses, infrastructure, and firefighter safety. You could see, you know, the conditions that were out there. In 2019, the city declared a local emergency after multiple fire starts burned over 15 acres in the river. These incidents highlighted an urgent need to be proactive and manage instead of just being reactive. Council and the city leadership prioritized vegetation management and public safety, public safety initiative. The project was launched with council support and community backing. So the initial start on the project was done primarily with masticators, also known as heavy equipment, along the east side of the river corridor. It's where it had the most potential to impact the community. And additionally, there were five locations where it stretched from the east to the west side, at Niblick Bridge, 13th Street, Highway 46, and the two pipelines in the north and south end town. This was primarily to protect critical infrastructure in the city. And these breaks in the spring of 2020 were not able to be managed for annual grasses that come up because there was no permit in place and no approval from regulatory agencies. Unfortunately, that contributed to the river fire in 2020 in July. Transitioning out of the riverbed and into nearby community destroyed two homes, numerous outbuildings, and caused significant evacuations. So following that fire, there was significant pressure and support for the city to do more. Following that, it led to the expansion of the emergency fire breaks to the current So this work, and you could see them there, it relied on small track masticators and hand crews with chainsaws and track chifter to clear the brush and lift up the canopy of the trees. Doing this limits the potential for fire spread. At the same time, the city piloted a goat grazing project on 15 acres in the Salinas River, and this proved to be very successful, and it demonstrated grazing as an effective, cost-efficient tool for managing vegetation. Building off of this program, targeted grazing has become the primary method for our annual maintenance of the fire breaks. And grazing accounts for 85, 84 to 85 acres of what you see on our breaks, and the other 32 acres are completed with mechanized equipment, mostly weed whipping and mowing. And so you can see the areas in yellow are what got grazed this past year, and the purple is the mechanized equipment. So the treatment prioritizes high-risk ignition zones to maximize fire mitigation protection. So none of this work is possible without regulatory approval and permitting. And so it was a two-year process to obtain a five-year permit from the Regional Water Policy Control Board, not an easy process. Before they would give us that approval, they required us to get a lake and streambed altercation agreement with California Fish and Wildlife, also not an easy process, which is why a lot of times these type of projects don't, don't make it to the finish line. Both of those agencies required SECO review and completion, which we were able to get done with Al House and Mead, third-party biologists. All of this achieved regulatory clarity for managing the riverbed and first of its, of its kind, set a precedent for vegetation management in a riparian area, and has now become a template across the state for, for other communities. Something we're pretty proud of. So you might ask, this seems like a lot of work and effort, so what are the benefits? Well, you can see from the bar graph there, in 2020, we had 129 fires in the riverbed, and we burned 35 acres. Last year, 2024, 37 fires, 1.2 acres burned, trending in the right direction. So the work is worth it. And so what does that mean for the community? Well, it reduces community risk. And by reducing community, by reducing ignition spread or fires and spread potential, we lower the probability of fires escaping the riverbed. It increases firefighter safety by limiting their exposure to these fires and conditions down in the riverbed and gives them a good area to engage fire. And then it improves service by reducing fires and keeping them small. We've increased resource availability to respond to the community's additional emergencies. We avoid high suppression costs. Prevention costs are far lower than suppression costs and recovery, as evident from the 2020 river fire. And then lastly, it strengthens, it strengthens confidence. So it demonstrates proactive leadership that builds residents' trust and confidence. So none of this would be possible for us as a city to do it alone. We rely on partnerships and collaboration, and then of course, the funding that goes along with it. And so I mentioned Al House and Mead, they're a third-party biologist. They've been with us and this program from the beginning. Lindy and her team are extreme supporters of the project and have been great advocates for us. And then we have the Fire Safe Council, San Luis County Fire Safe Council. They've been a great partner. The relationships that we've built with them have allowed us to secure grant funding for the majority of this work and help us to avoid having to dip into the general fund. And then operational support comes from the Goat Girls. They're a local business, and Beth and her team, this past year was the fifth year for her to graze, and it's not an easy, easy project. It's, it's one of a kind for her to graze in a riverbed. And every year, they're looking for ways to improve. And so in 2021, it took 72 days to graze the entirety of fire breaks. Last year, she did it in 42 days, which is important because we can't start grazing until May, and we want to get it done before fire season kicks up. So she's doing a great job. When I talk about funding, I, I mentioned Fire Safe Council. You know, we You know, we approximately receive $180,000 a year for the grazing and the crew work to be done in the Salinas River, and they've been a great partner. And then additionally, through Cal Fire, we received $430,000 for, to purchase mech, or equipment for treatment within the city. And so we put most of that into service this past year. One of the main pieces of equipment was a remote track chiper, and it's been being utilized to work in our open spaces within the city. It's been great. So future direction for the project, I had mentioned, is a five-year permit from the water board. That expires in December this year. We're currently working on extending that for another five years. And, and that, that would be the recommendation, recommendation in the, in the route to take. Number two, expand strategic fire breaks with San Luis County, similar to what we did in Fern Canyon. And so we'll look for opportunities and where there's potential and, and collaborate with them. Number three, pursue ongoing grant funding and state allocations. We're going to continue to work with Fire Safe Council to receive this funding and look for other opportunities for that funding. And then fourth, just maintain transparency with council and the public. Public's a huge supporter of, of this project, and we want to keep that support. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Cam Gregory.
Yeah, thank you for your report. I have a question, it's kind of a numbers question, but from the Fire Safe Council, we get other funding for other projects like taking the brush out of Fern Canyon and stuff like that. How much, how much money have we gotten from the Fire Safe Council? That's my question.
In total?
Yeah.
Uh, my guess would be 800 to, to a million, the approximate guess.
And do we have to compete with other entities for that?
We do. There's, all the communities in the county are, are looking to, to utilize that funding. And fortunately, because the, the relationships we've had, we've created there, and the fact that the project's ready to go, anytime Dan Turner from Fire Safe Council calls me and asks, do you have something, crews available? I usually always have something or we have someplace to put them to work at the city. Thank you.
Yeah, I know they just added the, the chipping over on the west end too, which is something I asked for many years ago, and they finally got it done, so.
Yeah, Chief Patty is working on that, doing a great job.
Yeah, very good, Paul.
I've got a little thing.
I had one more question, yeah, hang on. With regard to acre-y square footage, so to speak, cost-effective versus goats versus manpower to clear, you know, mechanized versus goats. Do you have a rough estimate of what it costs per acre for the eastern?
For the grazing, it's about, there's some additional costs that go on top of it, but it's, it's about 700.
An acre?
An acre.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, so the crew, though, we get through the Fire Safe Council.
Right.
They're 12,000 to 13,000 a day.
Yeah, and how many acres can they do in a day?
It depends on the vegetation that they're working in.
Yeah, that's quite a lot of difference there, too.
Yeah.
Definitely. How many goats do they have? And I mean, she's.
This year, we had, at the peak, 1,400 goats.
Wow, that's a lot of.
And they were split into two herds, grazing both sides of the riverbed simultaneous. And that's how we've been able to shorten the timeframe.
Great. Councilmember Beal.
Yeah, great presentation, and what I love about this is it's a super example of these partnerships because you have expertise that Lindy doesn't, that the Goat Girl doesn't. Everybody brings their strengths and capacity to this project to give kind of a holistic solution to this very, very serious problem. So I've had the opportunity to work with Lindy over the years, and I'm very proud that this is a model for other people to look at, even in terms of how you're navigating the permitting and dealing with all the different agencies, which I'm sure was amazing. But has Lindy written it up, or has the chief written it up? Is this written up in different places?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's known for sure. And like I said, Lindy is always advocating and sharing our successes. Whenever she's, you know, getting calls to do work for other communities. I know that San Luis has benefited from this program or this permit and long-term plan.
Yeah, because I know, she's a scientist, and I just wasn't sure if she'd written it up in some other, you know, non-local publications or.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, I'll give her a call. Okay, thank you, great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Jay, one last question. I know that, you know, all the cities that have rivers running through, in which most all of us, you know, have that same problem with Regional Water Quality Board. I mean, they knew our situation. I think last time, we had almost declared an emergency to get in there and do it without their approval. We're not doing that this way, we're going through the channels again.
Yeah, we did, we declared an emergency because there was no approved plan.
Yeah.
And there are certain things that you can do under declared emergency. You can't just keep declaring an emergency to do the same thing over and over. So we were, we were required to get the permits.
Yeah, at least we keep it running, that's good.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to M. On the agenda, it was General Public Comments.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Sorry about that. Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. Am I to understand correctly that the fires that you presented were caused by the homeless? And if that is the case, is there a possibility of getting the homeless in one of these programs to start clearing the vegetation themselves, or maybe even operate the goats? These are just ideas. That and, and if these are all, are these all man-made fires is my biggest question. So if I'm understanding the presentation correctly, you guys are clearing vegetation in the riverbed particularly to prevent homeless fires?
Yeah, that's exactly it. That was, I think, Jay, real quick, the majority of the calls we had in those years was started by people. Chief?
We can't directly relate them to the homeless because we can't, we don't have video cameras down there. But we know they are human-caused.
Human-caused, that's what I meant, right, thank you. All right, let's move on then to General Public Comments. This is the time that the public may address the city council on items within its purview but not scheduled on tonight's agenda. Counselor staff may briefly respond to statements, questions posed by the public. Please fill out a speaker card, give it to our city clerk upon speaking. We will have three minutes to speak. Those wishing to speak on any item as scheduled for tonight's agenda will be given the opportunity to speak when the item is being considered. So we'll start off with Dale.
Dale Guston. At the last council meeting, I left a little early, but I listened to the entire council's comments on my way home on the radio. And as is the tradition, Mayor Martin, Mayor Hammond was the last person to speak. And when I was listening to what you had to say, Mayor, I was terribly disappointed in you. To make disparaging remarks about a fellow councilman is uncalled for. And I, I just couldn't believe that you would do that as a fellow Rotarian. I'm just disappointed in you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. Before the meeting started, I, I, well, since I've discovered Creston has been paved, if PRPD wants to find me, I am now accidentally speeding down that road. It is so rare in California that we get to drive down a road that's freshly paved. And so I had the pleasure of singing at the Long Branch Saloon the other night, and woo, there I went. So don't look for me. I, it's a beautiful thing. The other thing is the bike lanes on Springs, Spring Street look absolutely great. I think it's amazing, Spring Street, that was my wish, I think it was three years ago when I interviewed for District One, is that Spring Street grow up with the rest of the city. I would rather see Modelo from Spring Street down, not the wine stuff that you're approving tonight, but we can deal with it. I have a question from Holika. I go to the skate park very often, and I'm curious of what happened to the playground that was there. The Mercy Air, I sent you guys an email, and I've been working that on, I'm working on that with Jimmy Panetta's office. I got a phone call from Washington DC, which actually surprised me because it's really rare when DC calls you. And Jimmy Panetta's office is furiously working on it. They want to bring back a full-service helicopter, which is search and rescue, everything. And again, as I said in the email, he is a big advocate for veterans, so I can see why he would choose something like that. He indicated that it wouldn't be within the calendar year, but it would be something that they put at the forefront. So the city chief, Sternetta, anybody's welcome to work with them directly. And I'm, I'm very happy to continue working on it. My, my next question is about the homeless director. I haven't seen one yet. Echo is now closed to everyday beds. I remember in the presentation, there was supposed to be a ten-shelter bed, or warming shelter, or cooling center that went along with closing that, and I'm curious to what happened to that. And back to the homeless, we were very anxious and excited about grants pass, yet we're still having to put out fires and rescue every winter. So I hope that that ten-bed shelter that you guys proposed that night comes quickly before the rain. I'm wondering if I can get an answer on that. I went to the open house, that was a lot of fun, I stopped Fire Station 3, and it was beautiful to see the kids there. It just takes a kid one day to sit in that fire engine to become your next chief, and it was just beautiful. So I just wanted to ask those questions. And I also drove down to Tuscadaro, and I asked Ditas and everybody in this planning department, please don't ever put parking lots in the median like Pisma and a Tuscadaro. Those are just asking for accidents when people back out. But that's all my information for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name's Lisa Segler. I have Half Moon Herbary, it's a small microgreens and perennial herbs business farm in, in East 46. I get super nervous. Today, I'm speaking as a small farmer who loves this land and wants to contribute to our local farm system. My farm is only two acres, zoned agriculture. It's a simple operation built on regenerative agriculture, no chemicals, no tilling, just soil, sunlight, and hard work. I've worked with many farms in the area and many restaurants and restaurateurs, and I'm excited to finally work for myself to build my dream of growing specialty crops for local chefs. I primarily grow microgreens in a converted school bus right now. I have 800 square feet of protected grow space that's perfect for young, delicate plants that cannot be grown in the field. This is where I'm asking for your help. I'm having troubles with the permit office, and I'm hoping that the board can help me with this. I don't have a house on my two acres of zoned agriculture, it's just a farm. Farming does not require a permit, but the permit office is having a hard time establishing the primary use of my prime ag land as farming. I've been working with them for about five years now, and we still don't have a solution. I'm working with Cynthia, and at her request, I've applied for a nursery permit. She feels like a permit would help establish. So I'm hopeful that this will help to show that I'm working with the permit office and trying to make that work. I also have an exciting opportunity that I wanted to share with you guys. This is a passion project of mine, and I'm over the moon happy. It's taken me a year to make this work, but I have been accepted by the USDA to directly accept EBT on my small individual farm. With the nursery permit, I'll be able to sell fresh, small-grown vegetable plants, and folks can buy them through EBT and then grow along with me, and we can grow the same crops together in the same area. Think this will help me create a community of folks that love fresh food and really reach out to folks that way. At the end, this is my hope, that you'll look at the local farm ordinances and see how they disproportionately affect very small disabled farmers such as myself. And it restricts, it really restricts my ability to provide for our community. These ag rolls weren't meant for small farms like ours, especially farm, small. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's okay. Yeah, you can summarize if you like, go ahead.
Especially for small farms that don't have a house on them. I'm trying to keep the prime ag land in ag use.
Well, let us know how Cynthia gets, gets you through that process and keep us up to date.
I'm working with her, and I just.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Just helping her.
You bet.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Annie Bowsky, and I'm here with the San Luis Abysmo Council of Government. I wanted to share with the Paso Robles residents that SLOCOG is hosting six countywide community workshops to engage with residents about the Local Roads First Initiative, a potential countywide transportation tax measure that may be on the November 2026 ballot. So we want to invite all residents to these workshops, which are designed to give, give them a chance to meet directly with SLOCOG staff, learn more about the county's transportation funding challenges, and share their own priorities for local roads. We know that road maintenance, safety, and long-term transportation planning are concerns that affect every community within the county. And Local Roads First is about exploring how we can invest in these new, in these needs together with dedicated local funding that stays here within SLO County. We encourage community members to attend a workshop in their area or an online session and share their perspectives. Input from residents is critical to ensuring the initiative reflects the real needs of the local communities. There have been two successful workshops already, and there are four more this week and next, with one more, with one more workshop being held in North County and a virtual one on the 15th. The last North County workshop is going to be Thursday, October 9th, and that'll be at Centennial Park in the Live Oak Room. So we invite all residents to please join us. And I just want to say thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing from residents about the Local Roads First Initiative. And for more informations and official times, they can visit localroadsfirst.com. Thank you very much.
So when is the, when is the October 9th at Centennial? What?
October 9th in the Live Oak Room from 6 to 7.
6 to 7, okay.
And you can find all the information on the website.
And what's the website again?
It's localroadsfirst.com, or if you go to the SLOCOG website, it's the first thing you'll see.
Yeah. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Murray, I thought I saw you back there, come on up.
Murray Tal, Templeton resident, Vice Chair of TAG, not representing TAG. I'm also a member of the county Republican Central Committee, not representing the committee tonight. So good to see you guys again. Back again, couple things. One, I wanted to follow up in my last, at the last meeting, I had indicated that we had a PRA request that was not responded in time. And then heard from the county council, and I checked with your city clerk the next day and, and found that in my emails, didn't recognize her name was on the email. Was a little bit late, not much, no, no big deal. So, but anyway, so in that response, she indicated that hopefully she would have information for us by the 15th of this month. And it's a simple, it's a detailed request, but it's a simple one. It's about recounting the 218 voting that failed. And we know that it will continue to fail, but we believe that the actual majority protest vote count was low. Because we had done a preliminary review with a consultant on it, and that was indicated. But the problem is, these records are not being maintained here. They are, last I heard, anyway, they are being maintained in Bakersfield at the Hallmark Consulting Office. And those records by P. And those records by PRA Act have to be here and they have to be available now for public review. And I haven't heard, I've talked to the consultant and I haven't heard back since that conversation a couple of weeks ago. And they also received this PRA request and they haven't responded to that. And I'm concerned that these records are not here and not available for the public to go over. So I'd like you guys to look into that. The other item I'd like to talk about real quick is the Paso Basin Authority. They had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. They have a budget now that because of the failed 218 funding, that it is not providing any funds to do what they are created for, which is to implement the basin plan that went into effect in 2020. And it's time to start looking at it because the budget they have basically is funding their legal counsel and consultants, but they're not saving any water. And that budget only goes to December. And by the GPA formation document, if funding isn't available, reasonable funding by June of next year, that that whole authority will be terminated. So I hope you guys get on it because once again, there's no GSA agenda item to report on any of these problems tonight, once again.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? Welcome.
Gloria Pema, I'm here tonight as part of the Democratic Club of Paso Robles. I just want to announce that on October 18th, there is a countywide No Kings Number Two demonstration at Monterrey and Los Osos at 11:00 AM. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, CNN, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment. And go to Tim Greger. And Helica, could you explain the history of the change of the MOU for Echo to Linda George? Thank you.
Angelica Fortin, Community Services Director. So a previous city council meeting, council approved an amendment with Echo Paso Robles to move from providing five nightly shelter beds to providing a full 90-day program. The 90-day program is, has proven to be a more successful path to permanent housing. So there are actually several programs throughout the state that are moving towards that model. Echo did receive funding through the county to offer warming services this winter. Starting in November, they will be opening up 10 nightly beds. They will be weather-based beds. So those beds will be available based on the temperature and whether or not there will be rain predicted.
We still have that one emergency bed, though.
So we do still, in our agreement, have one bed that can be assigned by Paso PD or Fire specifically. But those, that bed is available for their assignment. So if they do encounter someone needing shelter, it allows them to be able to place.
Got it.
And the warming shelter starts at the beginning of November?
It's in November and I apologize, I don't have an exact date, but it's in November.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay, we'll move on then on to agendas items to be deferred. Hacking City Manager, Ryan Cornell. Do we have?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, Ryan, thank you. Tonight, we have, next up is the consent calendar. And if we can have Ryan do an overview of the items on consent calendar before we talk about them and vote on them.
Thank you, sir. We have 14 items on the consent calendar this evening. The first item is the approval of the September 16th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. The second item is receipt of advisory body minutes, including the youth commission for August 11th, 2025, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission on August 11th, 2025. The third item is an approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Paso Robles Housing Authority to clarify some formation language that has been going on in the past. The fourth item is the receipt of the warrant register. Since the last check run, where there has been a total disbursements of $3,521,222. There are six items that are a significant note, over $100,000. The first one is Mont McDonald LLC. And that's for the plant specs and estimates for the Union Road overcrossing in the amount of $202,321.62. The next two are pass-through payments related to the travel paso and the countywide tourism district. The first one for the county is for $143,315.81. And the second one is for $190,225.62. The next payment is to Cantana O'Toole Olson LP. This is the settlement release payment that was approved the last council meeting for $250,000. The next item is SUSEA Construction. This is construction costs related to the Flimson pedestrian improvements for $164,809.18. And then lastly, we have JJ Fisher. This is construction costs related to the pickleball courts on Sherwood Park for $242,473.15. Back on the consent calendar, item number five is the approval of information cybersecurity services renewal. Item number six is approval and second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 1163, which amends Title 99 of the Minnesota Public Code to include park regulations. Item number seven is approval of Del Ever's public art installation at the intersection of Park and 12th Street. Eighth item is approval of an agreement with Venerate Construction to provide construction management services for Crescent Road Phase II projects. Item number nine is the approval of a change order to Hartswell Construction for Sherwood Neighborhood Waterline Upgrades and Repairs. Item number 10 is approval of a change order to the contract with StanTech for project approval and environmental documents for the Nibbuk Road Corridor Plan. Item number 11 is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1162 to rezone property at 2508 Spring Street from T4F to TCZ2 zoning district. Say that one four times. Number 12 is approval of an oak tree removal permit, 25 national 5. It's a removal of one coast live oak tree at 915 Olive Street. Item number 13 is an approval of a resolution authorizing execution of amendment number three to the engineering services contract with MNS Engineering for additional engineering services. And lastly, item number 14 is the approval of a right-of-way agreement for the right-turn lane and public utility easement on Nibbuk Road. With that, Mr. Mayor, have you take any questions you might have?
All right, thank you, Ryan. Any questions on the agenda that we have set up on us? Okay, well, let's go ahead and say this, that the items on consent counter are considered routine and that not normally require separate discussion. However, any member of the council or the public that have specific questions or clarification on an item, we will address them now before the vote is taken. If a full discussion is desired by a member of the council or the public, the item will be removed to consent and then go down to the discussion list of agenda items tonight. I will ask council now if they have any questions on items to be pulled. Anything? Over here, Chris? And I'll ask then the public, anybody have any questions on any items on the consent item tonight? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and then bring it back to council.
Mayor Hammond, I move that we approve items 1 through 14 on this consent agenda.
So we have a motion by Gregory, second by Bow.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Any discussion? Okay, then we'll call for the question, Melissa.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I do have a quick question, though. I'm not sure really who to address this to. And it's not really related to item three, which is, was the housing authority. But do we have any relationship with the Chet Daughter facility anymore? I'm not sure. And Helica, would you be the one to answer that? We did originally when we built that, I think, with the city, but then.
Mr. Mayor, I think I could probably answer that. We have a long-term loan receivable, I'm still outstanding, which suffer certain developer fees similar to like the Oak Park developments. And so we still have a outstanding loan. At the top of my head, I want to say it's in the neighborhood $2 to $3 million, but I think that's the only relationship we continually have.
Yeah, I know. They're having some problems, I think, where they're bored. And I was just curious, you know, other than we're basically a lien holder on it, I guess, at this point. So, okay, that's why, thanks, Mark and Helica.
I just wanted to acknowledge community development in finding a 1942 housing authority document, too. So.
You looked that up?
Is that, is that, is that a record?
I think the clerk found those.
Well done. Thank you.
Way to go, Melissa. All right. Moving on to item Q1, discussion items, introduction of, or title only, and first reading of ordinance adopting 2025 California Building Code standards and local amendments. Charlie, you're gonna have that item for us? Charlie, we're gonna have you come and speak more often. Once every couple of years.
Good evening, Mayor Hammond.
So I'm here to present the first reading of the 2025 California Building Code. It's a three-year cycle. Here's the path of how it goes through the state legislation. Start with state agency workshops, meetings, of course, a 45-day public view period, final summaries, meetings, conditions of publication period. And then it's finally published in July 1st. It takes effect January 1st, 2026. So some of the significant changes with the 2025 code, a lot of, there's a lot of energy code changes. So QII insulation, what that means is quality insulation inspections. So third-party verification is required on every single family residence. So that's quite a big change. Getting third-party review of insulation installations. And then battery ready is another significant change on 2025 codes, where you have to provide four circuits and 60 amps of available, basically offset, to run through a transfer switch for battery-operated control and for future use. You don't have to install the batteries now.
Have to have it ready.
Set up for future. And then it's pretty clear for gas-water heaters and gas space heater that prescriptively, they're not allowed at all. And performance, performance through the energy code, you can still get it done, but the trade-offs are unbelievable to get there. So I think the state's really trying to phase out gas-water heaters and space heaters. And then another significant change is in structural, in the structural portion of buildings, there's a 20% increase in structural factors. You know, for sheer walls, what you see today, there'll be 20% increase in value.
Strength, yeah.
Yeah.
I, quick question before you roll this slide, though. Gas-water heaters, space heaters.
Right.
Is there a way that our city can make a different kind of allowance? If we want to allow that?
And in the performance, in the performance trade-off world, yes. So that's kind of hard to. Through, through an energy consultant, they could get you there. But you're gonna have trade-offs like higher insulation value of your walls, window factors would be at a higher value to get there, to achieve that.
Going above the minimum that they're requiring?
Right, beyond the prescriptive requirements and the performance standard to get there.
What is, I had a question on that Q2 insulation. What is that rated? What does that mean?
Quality, so that's, what that means is a third-party person is gonna come out and look at that installation of the insulation to make sure basically all four planes of it, it's touching all four planes, it's not compacted in the stud bags.
That's something that our inspectors wouldn't be able to do?
It's, well, the state has required third-party testing, third-party verification, beyond what our local inspectors at the state level.
I have questions. Can I ask a couple of questions on this, too? So in layperson's terms, if you use spray foam and get really high insulation value, it releases or it makes the water heater and gas heater regulation easier to meet?
Yes, there would be a set off, a trade-off for that in, in performance. If you chose, instead of prescriptive, you know, requirements, if you chose the performance method, that would be a trade-off to get you there to where you could use a gas water heater.
And somebody who can do the certification as an example is Walter. I can't remember the name of his company. He does the duct insulation inspections, but I think he's doing.
He's a hers rater currently?
Yes, yes.
So he would be qualified.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Good, keep going. I just didn't want to interrupt you there too much.
Oh, so also the Chapter 7A, the wildland urban interface, we were concerned with this becoming a requirement within the city limits. So at the state level, that's been reorganized into its own section of the building code. However, there aren't any areas within the city limits that are required to meet.
WUWE.
WUWE codes, yeah, Chapter 7A.
Good, good.
So the fire, fire codes, EV charging not allowed. I'm gonna have Paul Patty.
Hi. Paul Patty, farmer from City Council Robles. Good evening, Mayor Hammond, City Council. So in the new code update, we're asking to incorporate the EV chargers to not be allowed in underground parking garages that are below grade. We've been specific to make sure that we encompassed everything, subgrade, below grade, above grade, in anything that's gonna be having residential component that is above that. And even in structures that we don't have now, but proactively looking for the future, that if we have a parking structure that's built, that we don't have EV chargers as part of that either. EV chargers at the time in the parking structures were a good idea until they started seeing what the result was after we've had them for several years in other jurisdictions. And so what we're doing is trying to proactively avoid there being the type of incidents that we've seen throughout jurisdictions in California. So that's the one thing. If you have any questions on that before I go to the next. Yeah, I do. Yes. So related to residential, if you have underground parking garage, if you don't have your charger underground, but you have your vehicle underground and it can plug into it, or is the activity totally foreboding? So we could, we also put in a provision that if the topography or we're not able to justify not doing it, that we could allow that within residential type of situations. Ideally, we would not want to have that. And it's, it all comes, stems from the ability to put these vehicles, the fires out and in the charging stations when they occur. It's, just to give an example, a regular vehicle fire with an engine compartment fire can take about 150 gallons of water to put out. A typical EV fire takes over 10,000 gallons of water. And we, that takes time and resources. We have to bring in resources from other jurisdictions. And fortunately, we have not had one of those type of fires here in Paso Robles, but we have seen them throughout California. The reason why in the parking garages that we're talking about not wanting to allow those is because those gases, those toxic gases that build up, they get in the ventilation system if it's underground. system if it's underground for a hotel, and that would require evacuation of the hotel that, that fire could continue for extended periods of time up to a day and a half burning. And so we, like I'm saying, is we're looking proactively about not saying that we don't allow vehicles to be charged with EV, but that would be on the exterior. So most hotels have exterior parking lots and it would be in those locations and would be less of a impact to the hotel occupants.
So the risk factor is the battery system catching on fire on the vehicle?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, these are specific to parking scenarios that are below like a hotel or a residence and would or would not apply to a standalone parking structure?
No, actually, I'm sorry, we would like to have them applied to all because the reasons why for that is not the residential component, but it's the ability, if we do have a parking structure in town and it is multi-story, the ability to get the fire resources up into those structures. San Luis City had a fire in a parking structure and it was, it caused quite a bit of damage because of the ability to get to it. So we're just looking at saying that it's, it's best if it's not involving part of the structure and it's exterior.
Thank you.
Paul, what about the onset of battery packs, battery systems? Are they allowed inside or are they strictly outside walls?
The, the ones for like residential, are you talking about those? Those are, those are inside garages and their exterior panels and it's for the vehicles to privately charge. Those have some safeguards in place to be able to, to cut the circuit breaker when they're, when it senses a fault or such. So those are on a smaller scale. If you look at the bigger ones, such as by the granary building, those are, those are bigger types of, of, of charging systems and have more energy built into them. And so with those type of systems, when you have somebody that's at their own residence, they know that they're taking care of their, their connections and their products and they're not just throwing their, their charging connection down and potentially damaging it. But if you're in a commercial setting, we don't know that. And, and they, and the owners of the, of the buildings don't know that. They don't know how well it's being taken care of because it's not, they're, they're having their customers, the tenants or the documents of the hotels use those and they're hoping at best that they treat them like they would their own. And if these connectors get damaged, it could potentially cause an issue, even with a car that wouldn't have a problem. And so that's where we're looking to be proactive in that is, is if that damage was done and it was missed and it happened on the exterior of the building, it would still cause an incident, but it wouldn't have the effect that it would have the impact to the community.
Right, got it, thank you.
Okay, and the next things that we have on here are fire department connections. Since we have been able to bring all of the commercial buildings into compliance over the last several years with the required testing of Title nineteen systems for sprinkler systems, sorry, we have been able to bring that up to speed. However, we had decades prior to us being able to do that where these systems were not serviced and companies were, were giving us reports saying that they were serviced. What we noticed is that we were having a lot of component failures because of the water being rusting up the, the connections and when they go to test it and, and remove the parts that they were failing. So what we're asking for again is to be proactive and we've been in coordination with the, the testing companies here locally in having a different type of connection behind our, our fire department connection, our FDC. And so we're looking for a piece that's going to be clamped on instead of threaded on so that we don't have to worry about when they're doing their testing and they're, they're taking the threads off that there's caused an issue. On top of that, it's the water usage that we have to, when they're doing their testing currently, we have a lot of water that escapes and that, that is wasted within the community. So we're looking proactively to be able to curb that amount of wasted water during the testing phase by putting these components in that are not going to be significantly more of a cost for the initial contractors to put in. So that's what this, the fire department connections are talking about.
Okay. So there's another slide?
Okay, yeah, so I didn't know if there was, because there's two components to the, to those connectors. Any questions on that aspect?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We're tag teaming this. Devin Quinley, deputy building official, hello, council. So just to clarify and reiterate, we do have the twenty twenty-four model codes that California has adopted that will go into effect no matter what we do tonight. Those will be going in effect on January first. So it's critical for us to look at these other local ordinances to make sure that we're able to adopt things that are specific to Passerables in what we deal with here in this environment. So our options tonight are, one, take no action, or two, introduce by title only and the first reading of the ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-five California Building Code with local amendments, and schedule a second reading and public hearing pursuant to government code, section sixty sixty-six, which is our recommendation. Or number three, refer, refer back to staff with direction for further analysis. Again, that could potentially cause a little bit of delay in us getting our local ordinance adopted.
That timeline, right. Okay, thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
All right, any questions of staff? Okay, we'll open up the public, anyone wishing to address this item? And Melissa, do we have one online?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for direction and direction.
Mayor Hammond.
Pro Tim Gregory.
I'd like to introduce by title only and the first reading of the ordinance, number XXX, adopting the twenty-five California Building Code with local amendments and schedule a second reading in public hearing pursuant to government code, section six zero six six.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gregory, second by Beal, discussion. Call for it.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good.
Thank you. Charlie, you did a good job of clearing the room, too.
All right, moving on, excuse me, city manager report, actually acting city manager, Brian Cornell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. I have about twenty-four items to go over.
Really?
Actually, I, I, I have three items. For brief, this is our last city council meeting in this chamber. We are going to be temporarily locating to the Norris Room at Centennial Park. I don't know if the, the community is aware, but we're going to do a pretty hefty remodel to the city hall upstairs, and so we're going to temporarily be relocating front counter facing activities down in this council chamber. So the council chamber needed to relocate it, and so the Norris Room over at Centennial is where we'll be for about the next six months or so.
And where that is, when you walk into Centennial Park, the gym is on our left, that's the direction you're going.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's right adjacent to the gym, there will be a, a, outside entry to the, to the temporary chamber place. So with the upstairs city hall is projected to take about four months worth and then about two months to get audio and video upgrades in this council chamber before we, we start back here. The next item on my list to, to share with you is some exciting news, the Saline Street request for proposal for that bridge construction has finally hit the streets, so we should be getting bids back in the middle of November for council approval in December. And then lastly, this weekend, Saturday is Pioneer Day Parade, may start at ten o'clock, and I encourage everybody to go down and have some fun. That would be the conclusion of my report.
Very good, Ryan, thank you. We'll move on then to council business and committee reports, start on my left.
Just a couple of comments, thank you, sir. Actually, they relate to our proclamations tonight, I want to give a, you know, raise my hand for Lumina Alliance, they do such good work and it's such important work, getting emergency shelter, crisis intervention counseling. And as a little announcement, I will be dancing with the Stars for the Lumina Alliance fundraiser in, in the spring, so that's just a little heads up, following in Mayor Martin's footprints. I think he, he danced a few times.
Good.
I was very excited to see the concurrent translation for the ad hoc committee on the food trucks. I thought it was such good governance, right? There was a spirit of sharing and learning, it was interactive, it was very productive, that it was just a really great example of how we engage the community and, and the council and the community members to make the best decisions we can. I attended the fire station open house, and thank you for the tour about everything. And actually, I was happy to see the, the training center and their use of recycled water, speaking of water, making sure that we're using that wisely. I have some other things, but I'll be announcing for Pioneer Day with Mr. Joel Peterson. Please come and say hi at the corner of Eleventh and Park, we'll be there. And I want to thank everybody for your kind words of condolences, I really appreciate it and thank you for letting me be of service.
Thank you, thank Chris, your dad was a great golfer out there. Councilman Bow.
I too have only three items tonight, the food truck meeting, thank you, Councilmember Beal, and co-hosting with the Councilmember Gregory, I think Councilmember Beal summed that up very nicely. Youth Commission, unfortunately, had to be canceled this, this month for lack of a quorum. And then I attended the CoLab forum last week. That was very interesting, we heard a lot about some of the pending energy changes that are coming to the county. Scary times on, on what, what is happening, not only with our, our homes and our businesses, but just throughout energy production in general. That's my report.
Thank you, Chris. Pro Tim Gregory.
Yeah, I was able to attend the open house at Station Three and got to meet a real live Dalmatian friendly doggy, more friendly than Augie, which is pretty amazing, so. But the station looks great and it was really nice to see your staff out there and they had a lot of people attending and a lot of dogs. Again, on the food truck ad hoc, I thought it went really well, it was nice having the interpreters helping us. And after that meeting, I had quite a lengthy conversation with several of the operators. And on that note, I've been contacted by Brett Butterfield about doing a parking area for catering food trucks on forty-six and Union Road. And he tried it at one time before and I think it'd be really interesting to initiate it. The reason why I'm speaking of that is every single one of the operators, I said, if you wanted to have a place to have it, where would it be? They said, well, all the townspeople come to see us wherever we are, so if we go out to forty-six and Union Road, it'd be a slam dunk. And you know, Brett Butterfield doesn't do anything lightly, so you're talking canopies and all kinds of fun things. I'll leave that up to you, Warren, as this is a recommendation, we get a hold of them. Jack, may I comment on that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know you don't need any more work, but sorry, but it would really be nice for the group, so.
It would be a good idea.
Then I went to a rip roaring party at the senior barbecue and had a great auction and the place was packed and this time the Eagle Scouts and the scouts operated everything. They kind of missed the firefighters serving the ice cream, but I guess the Eagle Scouts will have to do. And then finally, I was able to attend the groundbreaking down at Echo for their family addition. They received a three million dollar grant to build a seventy-two hundred square foot building for the family's area. And it is being built offsite to save funding and also it'll save almost two years in construction. I thought that was very interesting and it was attended, very well attended with Dawn from the coast and Heather and also our other Senator, oh, what's that? Yep, so, but it was really nicely attended and they're raising three million more dollars for that event and they're well over halfway on that one, so. And thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you, Steve. For me, I had one, just one meeting here, it was the Passerables Area Groundwater Authority, we met and again, working through all the things we have to do, especially the bylaws, we're getting that written up so we can operate properly as a board. Other than that, that's all I had following our last meeting. We do have upcoming events, we have Library Board Trustees October ninth at nine o'clock. City facilities are going to be closed on Observance of Columbus Day, that's going to be October thirteenth. Passerables Planning Commission meeting October fourteenth, six thirty. They're going to be over there at the Centennial Park also, aren't you, Warren? Looks like.
Yes, starting next, actually, that meeting's likely to be canceled, but that was scheduled to be their first meeting at Centennial.
Okay. And then we have the Passerables Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, that is out of the seniors. I'm just thinking of, looking through all these that might be impacted by our move and our changes here that we're dealing with city facilities, but it doesn't look like anything. Development Review Committee, what's, where's that going to be held at?
The Norris Room at Centennial.
Yep, okay, that's October twentieth. Passerables Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting is going to be October twentieth, also at four P M. Our next meeting is going to be Passerables City Council meeting October twenty-first, and that again is going to be at the Norris Room at Centennial Park. Adjournment, today's October seventh, two years ago, we had a tragedy in Israel that we all need to remember, I think that was pretty horrific, eleven hundred thirty-seven people were attacked and killed by the Hamas and they're still not complete with that, they're trying to get things finished, hopefully it sounds like getting close to some sort of an agreement. But I think I'd really like to adjourn, if I can make a motion to adjourn in the name of those people.
Second.
That lost their lives, so. Okay, motion by Gregory, second by Beal?
Aye.
Okay, all right, very good, all right.
Three seconds.
All in favor, we stand adjourned, hello?
Aye.
Aye, stand adjourned.
One more comment.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ryan, and it's good to show Chris how fast you get it done.
Yeah. Good job, Ryan.